I call to order the Town Hall Tibor Zoning Commission Regular Hybrid Meeting of Monday, August 1st, 2022 at 7:01 PM at Town Hall in the first floor Conference Room at 302 Main Street, Old Tibor. See you tonight. Me, my frequent chair, Mark Calderon, Vice Chair, Jerry Lewis, Secretary, regular Commission members, Mark Delmonico and Henry Northson. Also present are our alternates, Justin Terribilli and John Henry. And Sandy D'Amico is not here this evening. Our clerk is Joanne Galley and our zoning enforcement officer, Chris Costa. Fifteen people in the room and nobody online at the moment.
No. That's me. We have six now.
Six. All right. First on the agenda is regular business minutes of our previous meeting, that being Monday, July 18th. Are there any additions or corrections?
I have it.
That was fine.
Great job, Joanne. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Old Tibor Zoning Commission Monday, July 18th, 2022 meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of July 18th, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries, five in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. Correspondence? Do we have any correspondence other than that?
No.
Which goes with the agenda.
No.
No? Great. Next on the agenda is preliminary discussions from Mercine Ale Company to discuss possible regulation change to allow musical entertainment, food trucks and events at 39 Ragged Rock Road, Assessor's Map 53 lot 41 in the industrial high district. Owner at Mercine Ale Company agent, Lindsay Gorgon.
Yes, that's me.
Yeah.
Hi.
Please. Please tell us what you have in mind as part of this preliminary discussion.
Preliminary and special course. So, good evening. My name is Lindsay Gorgon. I'm here as a representative of Mercine Ale Company. We are a brewery that recently opened in space where Thirty Mile Brewing used to be behind, down the road behind the Ford dealership there. As you mentioned, we're located in the industrial zone. We are part of a six-unit industrial condo complex. We occupy two of those units. The other units are occupied by a CrossFit gym, a gentleman who repairs boat engines and a gentleman who uses another unit as his personal storage unit. We are immediately adjacent to the railroad tracks. We're an truck and cellar live. We are open Wednesday through Sunday. We close mainly primarily by nine, no later than ten. Posted hours is nine by the time we get everybody out. So, that brings me what I'm here to today, what you just mentioned, is to discuss the possibility of having live music. I know you mentioned food trucks and other entertainment. Really, the request here is about having live music and bands at our location. And I wanted to just have this preliminary discussion because I'll be honest, I'm not 100% familiar with the process and whether a regulation amendment or a special permit off the application is the route to go. And I'd appreciate any feedback that any of you have regarding that process. To give you a little background about how we operate is when we apply for a manufacturing for beer permit in the craft cafe permit to serve beer and wine at our location, one of the boxes that is checked by the zoning officer is, or one of the check boxes we check and she approves or signs off on is whether we can have live entertainment, karaoke, DJs, bands, comedians, that sort of, those items. What we're, we did not check any of that for our permit as we exist today. And what we'd like to do is start the discussion about how, when next year rolls around, when we're renewing our permit, we'd like the ability to have live acoustic music in the taproom. We're not talking a large concert or not talking, you know, loud music late into the night. We close, our hours are until nine PM. We're, you know, the concept of live music in breweries is something common to brewery industry. We have our neighbors in High Nine, they have music Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Coastline, a new brewery that opened in our neighbor, at our neighbor in Westbrook, have live music on Saturdays and Sundays. And there's an interest here. So, when we were starting to plan for this meeting, we asked, we started up, you know, petition for our guests, hey, would you support us in getting live music? And so, we have 92 signatures of people who would support any application that we have for live music. We also have, every tenant and the other tenants in the building have signed letters of support saying they see no adverse effect on their business if we have live music in our business. We've also been approached by musicians, local artists, seeing if they could come play their guitar in the corner on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, which would be great, but at this point, that's not allowed under our permitting. I want to know that, when you're considering this, we don't have any, where we are located in the industrial zone, there are not houses adjacent to our property. We're surrounded by woods in the front and on the side. In the back, there's the train. When the train, when an anthrax goes by, you're not going to hear any band we did if we even had one. So, that noise completely abhors anything that we would produce. We've considered the impact that it might have on parking and we believe we have ample onsite parking available. And if it ever posed a concern, we could have staff monitor to make sure that there's no parking on the road or other properties. Finally, we would never, you know, run a follow of Old Sabre's noise ordinances, which require music no late after 10, nighttime hours start at 10 o'clock. Our hours are until nine. So, no, music would not run beyond that time. And we'd like to note that we want to be part of the Old Sabre community, even the short time we've been open, we just opened the first week of June. We've seen several of our customers come to visit us, but have never been to Old Sabre before. And they ask us, what should we do when we're here? You should go see this restaurant on Main Street. Now to the point, walk around on the causeway. And we have customers of ours that are benefiting other customers, other establishments in Old Sabre. A lot of our customers bring in food from, I've seen a wide variety, from bringing in sushi to bringing in burgers from Jackrabbits. And so, I think that the possibility of expanding what we offer and having live music would only benefit the surrounding restaurants and communities by as a place to go and supporting that. I also, in this, you know, exploration and before I spoke with you tonight, I looked at those zoning regulations from Westbrook, which has Coastline Brewery. I also looked at East Line and Broton, all which have breweries in their towns. In those, in those regulations, they're, Broton has a definition for alcoholic beverage production small, and which is allowed, they are permitted in all commercial and industrial zones with a special permit for accessory use for limited food service and retail sales. In East Line, they have a definition for a taproom brewery and a brew pub. And they can have special permitting in either the commercial or life industrial. Westbrook is of the same nature. They have a definition for a brew pub and it may include an accessory use for food service and retail and wholesale consumption. Our Old Sabre regulations do not have a definition for a brewery. And so, right now, we are in, we are, because our permit is more of a manufacturing side with a side of accessory use of retail. I was unable to find any regulation that dealt directly with live music in Old Sabre's regulations, whether we allow restaurants to have live music or we allow some, a place like ours, brew pub. So, I want to thank you for your time and listening to me and having, taking the time to have this discussion. And at this point, I guess I would want your feedback on my request to seek either live music through a regulation amendment or a special permit.
Any questions?
I got one question. Just to be clear, did you say that you'd be completely inside?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Be inside.
Inside.
So, no intention to sit out front? Okay.
We have outdoor seating under, which we are allowed currently. We, right now, we have air conditioning, so the doors are closed, which is.
For music or the inside?
But the music will be inside. We never set them up outside. There's not space for that.
In the letter from Mercine Ale Company, it does say that you would like to have solo or small member bands primarily on weekends in the afternoon and evenings in our taproom. And there's another place in here where it says in. In it, I guess I want to emphasize that the zoning regulations that we have today might allow for food service operations, including Mercine, to have music indoors. But there is no provision in our regulations for outdoor live entertainment. And furthermore, in the cases of restaurants that have music indoors, it's up to them to decide how to operate that indoors, but there's not allowed any outdoor speakers. And so, when you talk about acoustic, not amplified, as one bullet point, and the next line says live bands, is that also not amplified?
I just, I, I believe that's the same thing. I'm not hesitant.
Well, like, one would expect that live bands might have amplification, but my point is that acoustic indoors, even acoustic outdoors would be allowed, but as soon as you plug it in and turn on the electricity, that's not permitted outdoors at all. And if you're going to have live bands with amplification indoors, you have to spill that out.
I think that's what we are, we are not asking for anything outdoors. We are looking to have, I could foresee the request for a, beyond a acoustic, nothing plugged in, for somebody to be able to amplify a band inside.
And you do, as you indicated here and in the letter, you do have a unique spot in the industrial district. But if we were to, if the zoning commission were to adopt a definition and or regulations to allow things that you're seeking at your location, you have to keep in mind that from our perspective, that the regulations have to apply to every single other property in the industrial zone in town, not just in your neighborhood, but in other industrial zones as far away as the high school. So, it has to be specific enough to do what you wish to achieve, but it also has to be aware of all the other properties that may be next to different kinds of uses, even different districts.
No, and I appreciate that feedback a lot. That's why I'm hesitant, I'm not sure that it's the right method at this time to seek a regulation change versus an allowance to let us do it where we are.
The Thirty Mile Brewing Company had on occasion food trucks on the railroad track side of the building. And they were there as an attraction for the brewery for customers who were already there for the brewery. The distinction is that it's not a food truck court, which brings people just for the food trucks without necessarily going through or having anything to do with the brew. And so, that was something which was not specifically spelled out as permitted, but it was considered a sort of a private event for the brewery customers to also have the food truck there.
Yes. No, food trucks are tricky in Old Sabre, as everyone's aware. And that's, we are not looking to get into the food truck business and we are, that is not what we want to do. And we are not, you know, if I had to choose, you know, what, what do we want here? Whether we can have food trucks is not our, that's not, I guess, to say it openly, that's not the case, like, issue. And I don't know if it's, I've been told that it might not be even a zoning issue, that there's a selectmen's rule or in place about food trucks. So, for us, I would see a benefit, even if food trucks never came, to being able to have a band or a guy with a guitar, a band on Saturday night or a guy playing his guitar on Sunday, setting aside the whole food truck issue.
And since we don't currently have a definition of a brew pub, and if you were to reference that definition from other towns, that would be a starting point for you. But in terms of what Old Sabre might adopt as a definition for a brew pub, would, you'd be interested in it working for you, but it would also have to work for other possible brew pubs elsewhere as well.
Correct. And that's why when, this is one of the reasons when I called Chris and asked it to be put on as a preliminary discussion, if the board feels that it is more appropriate to start that process of drafting regulations and seeking an amendment in this type of situation, we know it can take months. And what we would like and hope is that come next March and April, when we are looking to fill out our paperwork for our liquor permit for next year, that we have those pieces in place. So, whether it's over the next couple of months, I write and, you know, we propose an amendment to regulations, we can at least get this process started. So that if Old Sabre is open to future breweries or future brew pubs, the thought of where can those be located and what can they do in those brew pubs and breweries can be discussed.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah. I guess, one thing I'm thinking about is you're attracting more people, so you're going to get more people coming in, that's what you're trying to do at this point. So, limiting with parking would set the ceiling in how many people could come. So, how would you control that when you've got up to a point where you exceeded that capacity?
We have a couple of options. One, if we did have a band, we could limit it to, you have to, you know, reserve, you know, a space essentially and sell like tickets through Facebook or online where you'd have, you know, maybe you get $10 and your first four in a guaranteed space. And after that, I'm sorry, we'll have to turn you away. We could also post staff at the door to count and have a limit, we have a limit on how many people can come in by the far marshall in any of them, that we'd have to turn them away. No.
We do have regulations regarding joint parking and shared parking. There's a subtle difference. So, look for those too.
Okay.
And I think what you're suggesting is that if you had an event which might attract more customers and vehicles, then it would be during the hours that the other businesses in the building, same building are not in operation and would not be using their parking spaces. So, we have a provision for that. If the parking was filled, then there's a narrow entrance drive and there's some grassy areas near the street. So, you'll have to be aware of what the regulations from the, from the town side, that's not zoning so much, but is there, does the town allow parking on that street? You have to check with the.
They don't. Yeah. It's not allowed.
Chris wouldn't, but she just left. If that's not zoning, that's the town.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar that you can't park, customers not park on the street.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple. What is the capacity current?
I don't know the number. I have.
Far marshall capacity?
Yeah. 99. 99.
Outside, you know, it's limited.
I think it's in the building.
Yeah, I think that's the building.
Okay. So, I believe that you had some experiments with at least karaoke?
No, we have not.
We haven't done.
We have done anything.
Okay. Because I was wondering from what I saw on social media, whether or not, what the turnout might have been just as.
We had trivia.
Trivia, it was a trivia?
Trivia, that's, I don't.
Okay. Different.
Yeah.
My only concern would be the parking. I think, I think the consideration to be able to amend the regulations to support this type of business in town is something that we should look at.
Yeah.
How we go about doing that and helping is.
Well, we recently reduced our parking requirements. Right. Right. So, that would have to, that's a start from your perspective, but the parking for indoor rest is based on the number of seats. And so, I passed or whatever. Parking, which is filled out a lot in the parking section, but if it's not in there, then the zoning commission gets to establish what the parking requirements should be.
Yeah.
And the other thing with regard to the food service of the seating and whatever, that impacts your business side with whatever alcohol permits, the state grants, based on all those categories. There's a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
But that's not zone.
Okay. Yes, we will definitely take a bigger look at the parking restrictions.
So, it's, it looks like there's, there's an interest in having something that will shift.
Okay. So, it's, it seems what I'm taking away is it might make better sense to seek out doing a regulation amendment at this point because, or I guess.
There isn't, there isn't one for the brew pubs or.
There isn't.
We have, so it's almost creating the regulation.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. We don't have a standard here to go by.
Yeah.
You could help craft, craft that.
Sure.
All right. Well, thank you.
Any questions? Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is Public Carens, Shopper Village, application for cycling review for affordable housing, CTS 830G at 1550 Boston Post Road. And the agenda says it was, this application was withdrawn at the request of the applicant on July 25th. Next on the agenda then is Fine Fettles Dispensary, an application for special exception use for a 4,000 square foot adult use marijuana dispensary at 233 Boston Post Road, Assessor's Map 44 lot 11 in the gateway business B4 district. The applicant is FFDNBLV LLC, Fine Fettles, agent, attorney, Amy Sushen?
Very good. Okay. Sorry. Good evening. As I said, my name is Amy Sushen, some attorney with Herwitz, Sagrans, Los Feliz. Here representing the applicant, FFDNBLV LLC. We are here tonight, as noted, on 233 Boston Post Road. This facility was previously approved for medical cannabis dispensary back in 2018, wasn't selected in the state's process, but the approval involved in that application did propose a number of site plan modifications that, as I said, was approved. This plan does in fact keep all of those in place. So, what had happened at that time, just as a reminder, we're at the intersection of Boston Post Road and Spring Brook Road, Interstate 95, directly behind the property. The building is, excuse me, the site is currently improved with approximately 4,000 square foot building. It currently has office and residential use, a small non-conforming apartment on the second floor. And what was approved in 2018 is correctly the layout you see on the existing conditions plan, which is to make modifications to the front yard to eliminate the non-conforming parking that is in the front yard setback and would reallocate that parking from there to the east side of the site, directly adjacent. This area is currently just grass cover and there's a large tree that's a deeper root. So, when you're looking at the building from the street, the parking would be to the left of the building. And that also, at the time, that also included, this area is shown in gray, which is the ADA accessible ramp. There's no ADA accessibility at the moment. So, that would be the other thing that's maintained from the prior approval, as well as area in the back that was designated for a loading space. As we noted in the application materials, just to give you a quick preview, Fine Fettles approved would not typically need a true loading space. Most product is delivered in a smaller van or spritzer type, like you would see the smaller Amazon truck. So, there really isn't a need for a true tractor trailer or similar loading area for that. And then, as I said, the rest of the layout is consistent with what you see. There's no changes proposed to the exterior of the building. It would remain as is. Everything that would be modified is internal to the building. And Sheldon Crosby, our architect, is here if you have any questions. But the basic layout is that the first floor of the building would be the Fine Fettles dispensary. And Ben Zach will come up and talk you through some of the operational issues. But then, the basement would be storage, as would the second floor, as I said, the currently non-conforming residential apartment would be converted into storage. It's not allowed, can't have that use under the state regulations with the dispensary. So, that would be, that area would be converted to storage and also, for your consideration, eliminate that non-conformity. And then, I think the other thing we want, I wanted to point out is just, as I said, with respect to the site layout, all the parking spaces are proposed. The handicap space is at the end of the ramp, obviously, in this area, there's two spaces along with, spaces along the front, planting, 10 spaces. So, we are showing the total overall parking right here of 32, sorry, 27. It's a total of 27 spaces, 25 are required. So, we do have some extra. Then we'll walk you through some of the incentives that they have for employee parking and also talk to you about how operations are managed to ensure a good traffic flow. Dave Sullivan from SLR Consulting is our traffic engineer. He's here tonight too, if there are any specific questions. We did just get the chief sparrow's letter right before the meeting, so we can address some of those issues after we go through some of the operational items. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ben, who can walk you through some of the operations.
Thanks. Thank you. For the record, Ben Zachs, I'm the chief operating officer of Fine Fettles. It's nice to be here in person. In the last few meetings, I was there waiting for a baby in the hospital after my wife gave birth or at home with the baby stream in the background, so it's nice to be in person. But, so again, Ben Zachs, I'll just talk you through a little bit about just the operations of the facility, both to you through the life cycle of the customer, as well as the life cycles of the product. Because a lot of the questions that we get is, how do you operationally flow this project to essentially ensure quick traffic, security, you know, and safety of product and customer people? So, first I'll talk through customer. So, first and foremost, the customer in our facilities to expedite a process is generally about a five to seven minute transaction from time into the parking lot to leaving. And the reason why we're able to do that is because all orders from our, into our facilities are done pre-order online with a specific hour time allotment for when they can complete their transaction. And all orders are prepared prior to somebody being there. So, they can't just cut, they don't show up, put in an order, take some time and get out everything else and pay. Everything is pre-prepared and pre-ordered for the time they come in. Everything else and and pay, everything is pre-prepared and pre-ordered for the time they come in. So I don't have the site plan, so assuming somebody's parking around around here in the building, uh, right behind me. So assuming someone is parking inside or outside the building, we have not a security guard, you think that's sort of bad. Experience, honestly, we call it a reader, when somebody reads, uh, a customer asks if they put in their pre-order and does a first I D check. Nobody is allowed in the facility who is over who is under twenty one years old, so that's like very, very clear and specific, you absolutely cannot come in the facility. So a customer comes in to the customer ingress, they had their I D checked once already. Then they go to a checking window where they have their I D checked a second time, and that's where they're scanned into the state scan, the state system, to ensure that that customer has not purchased their allowable daily allotment. Is set up by the, uh, adult use cannabis regulations and we're rack up the responsible cannabis bill that was passed in July of twenty twenty one. So they get their I D checked, and so once they've checked, seen the I D here and checked in here, we've confirmed that they're and we've confirmed that they're there at the right time. This I D generally takes one minute, this depending on Connecticut's state system, different states are faster and slower in checking I Ds. This is about another minute to two minutes of getting their I D checked in and then checked in technically to the facility. Then they're buzzed in through this door into what's the sales floor and they're taken to their specific registers. You can see here, we have a number of registers, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve in this facility. And the reason why we have twelve registers is we try and overplan the registers to at no point have somebody waiting in line. One of the key data metrics for us is what is the amount of time in, amount of time out, and time at the register. We don't try and mess up customer service by being in and out too quickly, but we understand that waiting is what people don't like and also can create an issue if the average transaction is too long. So there, they show their I D one more time to confirm it's them and their pre- their pre-order is prepped and ready in the back of this facility. So we have an employee who wants the order has been prepared from our secure vault, which I'll talk about when I go through the product lifecycle. And package the receipt, it's waiting for them in their one hour time allotment of when they were supposed to come in during their time. Their I D is checked again to confirm it's them. They then take their product, they they then pay either by debit card or cash. They can't take credit cards within these facilities because the state act has not been passed at the federal level, and then they leave and they're out. There's no loitering allowed per the state law, so people cannot be waiting outside, there's absolutely no consumption. There is no open product at all whatsoever, every product that comes to us is packaged, childproof, safety, secure. In Connecticut, they've set up the rules that there's also no gummies or child sort of focused marketing. And everything comes in and out in an opaque bag that is stapled or in a childproof bag, so the product is childproof as well as the bag that we put it in to, and nobody can. Undo the staple of their bag within the facility, they have to leave and they also aren't, cannot open up in their car, because then they would have an open. Container of product within the car, which is also not allowed, and then they leave, and the reason why we also keep the greeter outside is to ensure if anyone is not leaving. That they're very specifically told that they cannot stay and loiter and hang out, and there's absolutely no consumption whatsoever, uh, within, on our premises whatsoever. This is not a consumption area, it's just a, it's just a retail sales facility. And then, so so that's sort of the customer side of it. Then there's the product side, so we have, um, right now, eight deliveries a week that come in of product. Everything has been manifested from a licensed cultivator within the state of Connecticut. We preorder it, we get a specific manifest that says what we're getting, and then orders come in through a direct secure delivery area. This is a man trap, so a Sprinter van with two people in it, uh, from a cultivator, not from us, comes to the back door. They've told us ten minutes before that they're going to be there, first they love, they have to call and ensure that we pick up to know that they're there. We then sort of prepare that we know they're coming, orders are brought in at different times on different days, so there's no consistency of anything of people waiting. They come to the door, they, there is an I D, there's a like a buzzer with a camera, they show their I D, they show their state approved cannabis agent. Card and registration, and then, once that's completed, we can open up the door. Then they open the, they open their trunk, they bring the product directly in and the door closes behind them. And the other person who's sitting in there, because they have to have two delivery drivers, stays in the vehicle at all times with the vehicle running, it's actually not allowed to turn off. Then we come in here, we have our printed copy of the manifest, they have their printed copy of the same manifest, and we go through and count every single unit. That, depending on how big the order is, generally takes between three and ten minutes. And this is a man trap, so this door and this door cannot be opened at the same time, so nobody could come in and come into the facility whatsoever. Once we've done the counts, we say goodbye, see ya, they leave, they go out, the product, the product then, that door closes, we then open this door. And then the product goes directly into the secure vault. Vaults in Connecticut, we have the strictest vault rules of any cannabis operating in the country, our vaults are six sided. Sheldon will know the details of this and me of this, the specific load bearings, if there are questions on that, but they're six sided, so. Floor as well as ceiling and the four walls around of eight inches thick of concrete with one inch steel rebar posts every foot. So they're an inch thick, so you can't, I think you need to put a car at like sixty miles per hour to be able to get through it. We definitely don't have that space to get to sixty, I don't think Formula One cars are coming to try and do this, but that's sort of the specifics of how it is. Product must always stay in vault unless specifically designated towards a pre-order. So our product does not come in, it's not like you might see on T V or in the news where they're like showing the products and people are smelling it and this and that, not in Connecticut. Every product is individually packaged, wrapped, childproofed, and held in the vault. When someone, that's sort of the initial life cycle, and then when someone prints out and when someone puts in an order to prepare for that order within the process. The order comes in, we have these specific computers that delineate towards it, we have a staff that preps it for each allotment of their hour sort of pickup, so we have to use a color coding system from. Roy G Biv, red is in the morning and violet is sort of the end of the day. Everyone gets a bag, we prep the orders, and then only the orders come out to here that are prepped for the first, ready for the first hour of the day. We bring them out onto a rolling cart into here, and then, you know, if we open at nine o'clock, let's say, right before nine o'clock, then nine to ten orders will get prepped from here. They're all in alphabetical order, so if anyone comes in, I'm always at the end, being a Z, it's sort of sort of my life. And, uh, so I would go to my specific register and all the Z products would be there for me. So once we have that sort of one minute of outdoor check-in and then two minutes, one to two minutes here, the order is generally prepped and waiting for me at a specific register. And I, uh, and then they confirm that the product is mine, and then I'm out, and that's the entire life cycle of the product. And so the reason why we sort of have these redundancy measures on speed and quickness is because there's always question, we generally get three questions in like every time we, now we're in. Which is about smell, safety, and traffic. Every time it's the same, it's it's sort of the same core questions. In terms of smell. These are packaged goods, right, they are inside a specific package, there's no emanating smell from the facility. We do use charcoal HEPA filters on all of our H vac to ensure that there's, you know, there's an extra layer, but because no product ever gets opened. Um, and the only product that would have any scent whatsoever is the flower, but remember, this is not the burning smell, because there's no consumption on site whatsoever. So the product has been held within the facility and, um, you know, this isn't a grow facility where there's, you know, thousands and thousands of plants. This is single packaged retail facility, so so smell we feel very comfortable with, and again, the smell of smoking cannabis and this and consuming and the smell of, um. Of like packaged good are very, very different, these are generally coming in pill bottles like you'd get at a C P S. So that that's in regards to smell. In regards to traffic and parking, which I'll I'll talk about a little bit, you know, we find that that speed is sort of a, is a the key driver to ensure that we have. That that we don't run into traffic issues, so as Amy alluded to before, we do some specific things for employee parking. So we pay all of our employees two hundred dollars stipend a month if they either take a bike, carpool, or public transportation to the facility. Um, and we've seen about sixty five percent of our employees, um, using that method to take that extra cash, and so that limits us on parking. We also focus that employees will park in the back of the facility so that there's never any cust- there's never any customer who would go near a single point of entry here for secure, for secure delivery. Just to ensure that no one is also back there, it's sort of a secondary measure. Additionally, because we limit people to a number, a specific number of transactions per hour, and we know sort of our math, we actually over-index for about an average of seven minutes at the register. When our average time of the register is about three, so when we sort of assume the number of transactions by either a drive upset or what we've seen in other markets or other operations. It's, um, specific to how many we can go through, and then we we generally double, double the amount of time that we need at the register versus the amount of average time, and so. And since we can sort of block people into a specific amount of time, we're incredibly specific with when they can come, how many people can come. If someone doesn't have an order and there's not a spot available for them, they are not allowed to just sit in the parking lot. That's one of the things that we, again, use those greeters for a second- secondary traffic manager. In addition to that, the state has set up a program within the state for the first operations, um, that there is, if any, the the first fifty thousand dollars of expenses incurred by the town, which generally would be. For police force or for traffic management, have to be reimbursed by a facility, we've never seen a facility come anywhere close to that spend, but that is in our budget, in our model. For if there's any need whatsoever in terms of, you know, extra town expenses, we do reimburse that that directly, but, um. You know, and that that has also helped traffic, uh, for for initial opening in other towns in Stanford where we have an approval, as well as, uh, in Manchester, we've worked with Laz Parking. And another Connecticut based company to handle the initial traffic demands, um, but based on our numbers, we feel incredibly, I know the proof is in the pudding, but we feel incredibly confident. To know to move people through and not have sort of a specific, because the parking, the average person's only going to be there for five minutes and with twelve registers. It's it's incredibly sort of specific. The third is around just safety and security, and so I don't have the diagram up here, but this facility will be, other than the restroom. Will be one hundred percent redundant camera coverage, uh, with a ninety day backup. So we keep, first off, at every point, no matter where a person is, again, unless they're in a restroom, employee or, uh, public restroom. You can see their face no matter what, and so that is one of the redundancies that we have, we put three hundred sixty degree cameras in certain areas. We have specific point down cameras at every check-in window, at every entrance, at every register, so we can see the cash handling. Also, the facility is three hundred sixty degree cambered outside. And so, and so this is an incredible, we are held to a higher standard actually than than prisons, banks, and pharmacies in Connecticut. There's nothing else that's held, this sort of the security standards that we are, and we're honored and happy to say that we've had zero compliance infractions and zero security infractions in any of our facilities at this point. In fact, actually, in Willimantic, uh, it's a, it's a, there before we turned, we actually haven't seen any trashes in front of us, we're across from the D F D F P's place there. The police asked us to add an additional camera, because if there was ever a, they didn't have a view in if there was a, uh, a crash outside, and so they asked us to add an additional camera. And, um, there was once like, it wasn't a vendor vendor, but two people were arguing, they came into our facility, checked our camera records and saw what was happening outside, and so we've had. An amazing, amazing, um, relationship with local law enforcement in everywhere, in everywhere that we've been operated, and we would plan and hope that that would be the case here as well. And then the data from around the country shows that when you put in, when dispensaries come into place, and they've done a number of studies from the thirty six medical states, as well as the ten and other states. Crime and arrests around dispensaries goes down. It's very consistent all over the country, and then the data against either a liquor store or a store that sells tobacco has more, uh, has more, uh, arrests or more police activity than around dispensaries. I think that's really because these facilities are so secure, were held to such a specific and high standard that, um, you know, it's 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 just been consistent data around the country as well as for us, so. I just said a lot, um, a lot of information about the specifics of our operation and our facility. You know, so I do open the question, the last thing that I did forget though is every single one of these doors, whether into the facility, into any room, into any anywhere, are badge access only or by buzzer. So a customer is only allowed into these areas, and they have to be buzzed in, they have to be led into here, led into here, led into here, they have to be buzzed in. Even our employees, some employees are allowed in the vault, some are not, some employees are allowed in an office, some are not, some everyone's not, a very few are allowed in the security equipment area, and some are not. And, um, we keep a track of every single person who's badged into any specific area to ensure that we have a record of anyone who's gone anywhere within the facility as a, again, a. A third layer of redundancy, so. That's, uh, that's much, yeah.
Your description of the hours about operation, uh, um. I didn't hear you tell hours of operation first, that opening, closing, and days of the week.
Yeah.
And then in the statement of use, on the first page, it says, uh, hours of operation, Sunday dash Saturday, nine A M to eight P M. Does that mean nine A M to eight P M?
We would gen-
Every single day of the week?
So we would generally plan to be open nine to eight, um, if there were specific, yeah, every day of the week, if there were specific rules in specific towns. We obviously comply with all local, local rules and legislation, uh, you know, in, for example, in Newington, we're allowed to be open, we're not going to be open this early, but we're allowed to be open seven to eight. None of our employees want, no one wants to go at seven A M, uh, but, uh, you know, so there's, since there weren't specific rules about hours of operation, we put in sort of that. But, um, if there were any specific hours deemed by the town that were allowed, that's what we would follow.
Right, but in the submitted art FX is Fine Fettle Dispensary.
Yeah, signage.
There is on the last page, there's a picture of the door.
Yeah.
To the building.
Yeah.
And on the glass, it says hours of operation. It's Saturday and it says Sunday. It does not indicate that any of the, any other day of the week, it would be open.
Sorry. Oh, that's a bad rendering, candidly, that shouldn't just say two days a week.
So the picture is incorrect.
This picture is incorrect, I don't plan to only deal with two days.
It was just a representative.
Well, it's.
Typeface, et cetera.
Correct.
It's a submission that contradicts what's said somewhere.
A hundred percent of those, uh, hours of just Saturday and Sunday are not correct, this is, what I will say is, by law, all we're allowed to have in terms of signage. Per state regulations, we have to show the hours and assign only up to that big, and so that, that's what the representation is meant to show, but the hours are definitely wrong there.
So in that, uh, statement of use, we typically also get the number of employees that will be on site at any given time.
Yep.
And did you tell us that?
Depending on.
It's in the same sentence, it's a range.
Fifteen to twenty three.
Fifteen to twenty three, right, so at any given time, what's the maximum number of employees that would be on site?
So the maximum employees that we have on site would be twenty three, and those generally are from our earliest hours, so when the staff sort of arrives, generally two to three hours before opening. Orders, pre-orders come in online, and then they prep all the orders, get them ready for the day, and then they leave. The reason why we have fifteen there separately is because that represents the people at the registers and people at check-in, and so twenty three would be the max. Um, and that would only be generally for the first few hours of the day, and then it tails off, and this would be in terms of peak capacity at any point, uh, within, within the operations.
So if those series stated with regards to other locations, that sixty somehow percent of your employees would take advantage of a stipend for.
Yeah.
Non-vehicular to the site transportation.
So while open, we'd expect to use for employees to use between eight and ten of the parking spots.
Right, so that would still leave that you would have to have at least eight parking spaces on site for the employees.
Correct.
And so on your site plan, have you designated eight spaces for employee park?
We need specifically designate the ones for employees, but.
Our our regulations require employee parking be noted on the plan. That that the spaces should be labeled employee park, but they've already described those as being behind the building, right?
There's no indication of behind the building of any park.
Right, well, it does.
The side, sorry, not.
On the side, on the side.
Keep in mind, there's also a very.
Side now.
There's very limited public transportation in Old Zabron, so that should become a factor.
Yeah, we, public transportation is only. Yeah, we, public transportation is only been sort of relevant in one of our facilities. But that's the stipend that we, we give to our employees.
Is there bike rack as part of this site plan?
We have not proposed one, but if you'd like to add, like us to add one, we can certainly find a location.
If you're incentivizing people, it's probably not a bad idea.
Yeah.
That's more likely to be a case on public transportation, quite honestly. Uh one of the other questions I had too, so taking a look at the composition of your neighbors. Um one of them is daycare at Brussels Street. How do you propose being a good neighbor to that?
So how do we, so we've had no people for go and lawyer and walk around towards any facility. Um and we don't have parking across the street, for example, going near, there's no consumption. So for us, we've just taken the approach of trying to be a good neighbor everywhere. We engage in the local chamber of commerce, we engage in sort of any other area. And no kids are allowed, we're on our, on our premises operating, can't be over twenty-one. You can't go in and shop with your mom. Um and so, you know, what I wanted to do is have a conversation to explain them, ensuring that nobody's going to go across the street. And I sort of backed three houses to the side. But ensuring that, you know, nobody were going near the daycare, no consumption. Making sure that we're watching of that, making sure that um you know, if they wanted us to have any sort of sign on their facility that was parking just deemed towards then, just to make sure that there were no questions. We've had neighbors ask that before, if someone wants to park next door. Sometimes people are like embarrassed to park in the dispensary lot. That's things that we've done sort of with the neighbors. But um, you know, we haven't run into those issues anywhere. There is not a rule within the state in uh how far a dispensary can be from a school. There's advertising rules around distance from a school, which is five hundred feet. But there's not how far our facility can be. And so there's obviously also no advertising. There's no view into the facilities, so all of our windows are completely opaque, so that nobody can look in. And so that there would be no understanding reaction. There's no sort of pot leaf motifs or anything of the sort that anyone would see anything that to know this is a dispensary. The only way someone, in theory, would know it's a dispensary is if they were going towards it or if they could read the word dispenser on the sign out, out front. And so there's no play, there's no consumption, there's no anything uh that people would see it or try and go next door or whatever.
So one of the other things, you, so you had mentioned the traffic coming into the property.
Yes.
One of the concerns of the police chief, I think, noted it in his response is not necessarily the traffic going into the facility, but you're also right next to one of the busiest intersections in town. How do you plan on handling the additional traffic? You're talking about people coming in every seven minutes.
Yeah.
And leaving every seven minutes. That's a lot of increased traffic coming through that intersection. How do you address that traffic?
So generally within opening plans specifically, we bring in traffic management sort of separately, right? So that way they can have either specifics that, right? It's not people queuing up to leave or queuing up to come in. And so we, we handle that specifically. We also have generally built an opening day and opening month plan with, with local law enforcement. So they have specifics of how do you want us to formulate our appointment system? Or how do you want us to um prepare for, for traffic demands? Or if there's people with cones or anything of the setup at the beginning, when generally there's increased sort of setup and then it generally tails off as more competition comes into play. Um we generally engage in that sort of, in that sort of planning process.
I'm more thinking, so at that intersection now, so I come through that intersection.
Yeah, from sixty-eight.
Every day. So my kids go to the daycare there, so I'm going through that intersection.
Yeah.
So very near and dear questions to me.
Yeah.
Um you probably have a vehicle going through that intersection right now, once every five to ten seconds.
Mm-hmm.
Currently.
Yeah.
So you're talking about a pretty heavy increase of traffic going through that intersection, either going to the highway.
Yeah.
So getting on ninety-five going north or coming off the highway.
Yeah.
Going south.
Right.
That's a lot of additional traffic at that intersection handling that is not right in front of the facility.
Hmm.
But I don't know, maybe fifty feet.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit down there, right? So there's, there's going to be traffic that comes in, right? There, there would, would be traffic coming to our facility. Um you know, generally when we, we think about the numbers, Dave is probably the best person to talk about this. But if there's sixty cars an hour, right? It's really adding one car per minute. And so it's on a percentage basis, it's not creating all of the traffic. You know, and, and so it's, it's really about ensuring education around, you know, to our customer to uh, you know, to the specifics of the turn there, of how people want us to be able to handle and manage it, right? You know, the corner sort of is what the corner is. And so that, the reason why we generally throttle the numbers of transactions that we communicate now, in an hour is to ensure that we're fitting in with the sort of demand profile of the, of the traffic. I understand, right? There's the sort of, the intersection.
Yeah, and from one direction, there's no stop.
Right, right.
At high times during the day, it can take five minutes to go through an intersection, even with nobody stopping.
Right.
So my concern is it goes from five minutes to what? And I guess on the tail of it, are you open to throttling down the customers that come in during those high peak times of traffic on the road?
Sure.
To help ensure that there's not a significant amount of traffic being added to the traffic pattern?
Totally, and our goal, you know, people sort of like laugh, right? It's what our goal is to be like the, the quiet neighbor, right? Not the one that everyone is annoyed by, for example, got those neighbors. But um, and so anything that sets up with a, with, whether it's within communication or within planning or within setup or with, just within total transparency of our plans and how we operate. You know, we want to work with the town and not say, hey, this is how we're dictating it. Because no one knows the specifics better than you all here and the rest of the folks in town. And so if there were elements of things that you wanted to ensure we did, or if you wanted us to add it to our text message, you know, when people put in their order or to their receipt or just, you know, we can't make a turn this way during this period. We are more than willing to work with whatever sort of the demands are, even if it's sort of at check ins, right? We've got other places where every month we have a, we have to have a sit down with insert person here to sort of assess what's happened. What would you like to see changed? How is this going? And generally those have gone well and then rolled off. But those are all things we're willing to set up, have conversations to ensure that we're doing it in a way that creates safety and, and consistency in the town. Honestly, we, we like it to be a much bigger deal upfront than in reality. Because we're handling it the way that the town wants us and preparing for it.
I, I think the one other thing that I wanted to add on that, and I know my understanding Chief Sparrow was joining our, our call this evening. But we had reached out to him on several occasions leading up to tonight to frankly try and talk to him about any of the concerns that he's outlined in his issue. I certainly was aware that he's had a longstanding philosophical opposition to this use. You know, even dating back to when it was just a medical dispensary. But the reason we wanted to reach out was to talk about a lot of the things that are frankly operational. That if we were to be approved, um the site was approved for a medical dispensary, it could still be used as a medical dispensary, that approval still exists. Um and so with the change, the proposed change of the nature of the dispensary um to adult use, we wanted to have the opportunity to be able to say that we, with this, we expect that there might be a little, you know, some higher traffic volumes. Or there might be concerns that you want us to address. He obviously has no obligation to meet with us ahead of the meeting, he noted that in his letter. Uh but that was really the reason for doing that, was to try and be able to address um, you know, some of those questions and some of those comments with somebody who has had more experience. Um you know, SLR's traffic letter notes that there's the, the three year crash data, there's no crashes in the vicinity, so it's, it's a busy intersection, but it's not um one that's producing significant amounts of crashes or things like that. Um then I think the goal would be, as, as Ben said, to try and have those conversations in, in a meaningful way. Um and frankly with the chief.
And you know, I think that it's not always fair to say, oh, in this place, they said this, in this place, they said that. But as one of our conditions to specifically open, for example, in Stanford is the town staff needs to approve our opening day traffic manager plan, right? Because that was one of the questions. In um, in Manchester, we have, we have the same thing. Uh Willimantic and Newington didn't ask for that. And so those are conversations and plans that we're used to having, right? And expecting to sort of understand because we know each location is, is nuanced and different. And every, right, town has different impacts that their folks have.
The model that you've done for this location?
Yeah.
How many per hour visits are anticipated?
What, what we outlined in the traffic study is that um it's approximately fifty-five transactions an hour for the peak hour initially, likely settling down to a, a range of thirty-five to forty transactions an hour.
Per hour, so coming from either direction.
Correct.
Thirty-five to fifty-five individual.
Yeah.
So you did a track, sorry. So you did a traffic study, right?
I was wondering. Yes.
So you did counts, did you do existing counts that are out there now?
We relied on existing data from DOT. Uh one of the reasons is uh counts you get nowadays are not necessarily representative of what they may have been a few years back.
Yeah.
We use those.
So did you find like certain hours, what peak hours were for traffic there?
Yeah, well, what we do is we take the heaviest hour in the afternoon of those counts and then we look at the, we assume the heaviest hour of the facility. In this particular case, it's the uh PM of the weekday. And then we look at that. Um and you know, frankly, you know, there, there's discussions about the operations and adding the traffic. Um in, in the big picture, there's not a lot of traffic that's being generated here. And when you look at relative traffic numbers, so when we're talking about a car to or a car every minute or two, something like that, it is not really a tremendous number. It's not going to really change how you feel the operations to be out there. Um what we were, uh what was brought to our attention and we spent some time looking at was the intersection. And in fact, they're, they are supposed to stop as they come off the uh, off the uh that intersection for the right turn, even though nobody does. And that's one of the problems when um they, they come down there and they see that there's a stop sign, they're doing the little brake check there. And sometimes they'll stop, sometimes they won't, and that causes confusion. And you have a stop sign that's approaching it on the main road there, but it's on the other side of where you would take the left turn or enter um onto Springbrook. So the intersection's a little bit awkward and we've been aware of that. But we've talked to some people and tried to get some history here, the state highway. Um there are some easy fixes, but there, the state's trying to balance day to day operations there versus what happens when it's used as bypass. So when it's used as a bypass, they like that free flow so that they keep the traffic moving. Um but in normal days, uh it's probably better if those right turners came to the intersection in more of a traditional manner. So we can look at those type of things, there are some easy fixes out there. We'd be happy to work with the state or with the uh, the police department or legal traffic authorities. Um but there, it's more of an awkward situation than it is a traffic volume situation that we're in that.
And just to know one piece that, and I think our busiest hours are generally not during rush hour times, they're sort of later. So we looked at our data in, in sort of especially the recreational markets where we are in Massachusetts. We're on, we're on Martha's Vineyard as well as uh, you know, sort of a beach town north of Boston. And our busiest times are like Thursday and Friday from six-thirty to eight, which is uh generally less busy than the sort of four to six hour, uh four to six hours. And so that's when we see it. And we base the data off of like what are the peaks versus sort of where do we generally see the busiest, the busiest times? Nine to ten is not a busy, is, is not a busy time for us. I don't know that, you know, what exactly that means for our clientele or whatever, but, but that's like not the time. And so um, you know, that's how we, we generally see it.
Yes, you know, the, the interesting out here, when we did our first one of these type of facilities um a couple of years ago, it wasn't in Connecticut, but there wasn't really a lot of data. And there is data now, you know, you've probably heard from other traffic engineers, we use the uh trip generation manual from the Institute of Transportation. They actually have a category now. The category is for facilities that have both the adult and the medical. Uh but we pulled our information off of there and this would be even less than what the industry data. And our estimates are based on that industry data. So you know, we're, we're a little farther into the life of these things, so we know a little bit more. So we feel comfortable, so what we're talking about.
And just, and just to chime in on that, uh generally we see that in a state, twenty percent of transactions are medical and eighty percent are adult use and their data pulls sort of both. And this facility would be a uh recreational only facility. So we wouldn't have the, the patients, our, some of our other facilities in the state will be, will be hybrid. But um this one would be recreational, recreational only.
You referenced a, a traffic study, but it's not a formal study. I understand, because there's nothing that's been submitted that we've.
Well, we did a traffic assessment. And there is a letter that's been.
Right, but it's not a formal study done on that.
Uh we can, we, because we couldn't get new traffic data per se uh because of COVID and things, we stopped short of the traditional high capacity software. In the office, we did run an analysis at the driveway. And operations would design a little service C, I believe, during the peak hours coming in and out of there. The, the site and that whole general location is unique. It's unique for a couple of reasons, I believe. One is a, it's a exit to ninety-five.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh southbound, so there's a lot of traffic coming off of there for that purpose. Plus whatever may come off that ramp for your facility. Um I travel that road uh every day, six days a week, uh back and forth, uh at least a couple times a day. While there may not be many accidents, there's a ton of uh possibilities, right? Because of the way that road is shaped and formed. And, and I have serious concerns because I've been in those situations where you've had to slam the brakes on, because of that, the added traffic to that area is something that seriously needs to be uh looked at. Uh I'm not a proponent of traffic studies. Cause I, I, I've learned over the years and found that traffic study versus reality are sometimes different, okay? Um and as Justin mentioned for that area, um I, I have those exact same concerns. Um because people don't stop at that light, they roll through it. And if they think they can beat you, they will. You add additional um activity to that site um on top of whatever else is moving. Or at the time that the chief mentioned, ninety-five gets shut down for some reason. That's the main access where it becomes a, it becomes a bottleneck. So I have serious concerns relative to the traffic that would come into that um area. Let, let me try to.
Sure.
Not gonna lay all your concerns because I think you're right, there is that angst. Um the DOT has recognized that when they put the stop ahead warning signs up. I don't know how many years ago they did that. But as a matter of fact, the uh the, the people that occupy this building right now, I, I know them because I'm an engineer there. And we've worked together. Um they've been aware of this and they've been aware of DOT understanding it, understanding this issue. And really what it comes down to is fairly modest uh changes to that intersection. But they have to be implemented by DOT.
Right.
So you know, what I can say is they've looked at it in the past and maybe it needs a fresh look. Uh but to lay affairs a little bit with this particular project is, you know, if we're talking about, let's say, forty um transactions, all of those forty are not coming from that direction, they're coming from.
Right.
Most, many of them will be coming from the municipality itself and not be either way on the highway. Um some will be coming in that direction, some will be coming in that direction. So even if we assume it's a third, 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 then you have ten to fifteen during the peak worst hour, fifteen mixing with those couple hundred vehicles that are coming off uh on, on Springbrook now. So not only coming in and out of the driveways at a vehicle every minute or two, it's the mixture of vehicles that it's, that it's joining is so much larger that it really won't have a, a feeling of change because you're coming off that ramp. Um you really can't tell the difference if you're in the stream of traffic that's you know, three hundred vehicles an hour or three hundred and ten vehicles an hour.
Right, but you will have, you, you will have added, if there's only two ways to get to that site. It's either from this direction or from, you know, Mystic Market intersection or from there, okay? So as traffic comes from Ferry Road, comes off ninety-five and the traffic's coming in here, which are going to be far more, I would believe, turning left into this facility. And that traffic joining in there, it, it, it has the potential to be a bottleneck and could be a um serious traffic.
It's a, it's an issue, it, it certainly will not become a bottleneck. It's a, it's an issue. It certainly will not become a bottleneck, just because the volume is not that great. And we've looked at it for the safety of the driveway. You need to have, you know, proper geometry of the driveway, you need proper sightlines and things like that. So the driveway will function. Um, it does have some volume of traffic, not no traffic. Um, but it, it's, it's not going to change per se, perceptively.
I, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but I respectfully disagree with you on, on that. But I'm fine. I do have one question for, uh, for you.
Yeah.
Is, I know the front of the building, uh, which at one time I guess was a retail store is all glass.
Yeah.
How is that going to be secured so that there's no attempted break in?
Sure. So we use, so just on the view side, we use, um, we use like a opaque film, right? Uh, and then we have alarms, we have, uh, mo, we have a glass break, a glass, glass plate monitors connected to a double redundant alarm.
But the glass isn't going to be changed from what.
Generally changed with bulletproof glasses.
Well, I wasn't asking that. I just didn't know whether it was going to be closed in.
It is sort of raised there. So it's not like a car could go in there. Um, but we do care on keeping it, keeping glass up front. And then again, you know, if that were to happen during, if anything, God forbid, were to happen, all product, all cash, all, everything is stored in the back of the vault beyond.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds interesting.
In your statement of use on page two in the second paragraph, as we said, with traffic generation. Um, they're currently finalizing that traffic impact analysis that says there. Is that traffic impact analysis completed as part of the material?
Yes, that was the June twenty eighth SLR letter that outlined the.
And that then is, uh, traffic impact prepared by a recognized traffic engineer. And that's part, that's part of this, right? And that's now part of this application.
That's correct.
Okay. We've heard tonight about, um, customer access in terms of schedules, timing and anticipation of five to 10 minute visits. But the only part that's in the trinket statement of use is the customer visits generally last five to 10 minutes. I would like to see something in an amended statement of use that reflects what you've said.
Yeah, for specific operations.
That there would be control over a customer, uh, appearance and disappearance, if you will, that, um, appointment times, allocation of visit times with regard to, uh, traffic dip volume generation. And that, and that you would have some control over the customer visits in terms of frequency and even to the point of traffic generation. That's not in the written maturity.
Certainly not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a question, what happens if someone misses their appointment?
Someone misses their.
So say that there's a traffic jam and they're supposed to be there between seven and seven thirty.
We generally hold it back to stop. We put it back to stop. And if there were to be an open time within the generational flow, we can reach out and fit them in. But if they miss their window, they can't come back until there's a next window available to them. And so our greeter, our greeter would either do it or they note it in the online system. If, it's sort of one of those, if you let people slack on the rules, you sort of lose the rules. And so generally it's sort of like, if you can fit into the rest of the day, and generally we don't fill every single one. But if you can fit into the rest of the day, you will. And if not, replace your order for the next day if, uh, if it's at the end of the day. And that's just sort of just news you lose. I don't know if I've got a way to describe it.
How do you communicate that?
So we have a, we have like an online ordering prep system. It's called iHeart Chain. It gets, it sends them texts. We can send them individualized, et cetera. Yeah.
And what percentage show up on site thinking they can get in?
Oh, what percentage show up on site thinking they can?
It just generally.
People are generally pretty good. Obviously, we, we've seen, we're in Martha's Vineyard, we're held to like this very specific data points. Um, they're actually like only thirty minute windows, actually fifteen minute windows. They let's extend it to thirty. And we've seen like a ninety percent or like their rate. Our end of day stock is, is generally pretty slim and limited as put back. It's not, it's usually someone puts in order and is like, yeah, I don't want it versus they come, they're way too late and they do it. We're very specific in our instructions and directions that they have to come during that period. And if they are going to be late, they'll oftentimes call or they can change their appointment and see sort of the, the window like in a a doodle or a calendar type thing. It's just a system for canals that we use. It's all about iHeart Chain.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the larger body of paper stapled to the statement of use, there's an awful lot of information there that comes directly from the uh, kind of, kind of the general statute adopted regarding this matter. I noticed that there's a dispensary facility and there's also in here a dispensary department.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a dispensary department that's a part of your dispensary facility?
So not technically in our facility. So in medical dispensaries because.
Well, you're not proposing.
Yeah, we're not proposing a medical, but the delineation, definition generally varies for hybrid facilities. Yeah. So that doesn't go to us because basically what that says is non-patients can go into what would be considered this checking area and only patients into the sales. We don't have that, uh, we, we don't have that distinction delineation. So everything is considered within our dispensary, within our dispensary facility, a little different than the medical.
But you don't have a dispensary department within your proposal for this location.
Correct.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a different department. We do delineate between the back of house and the front of house. But, um, not in terms of the state regulation and dispensary facility and dispensary department, you know? Yeah.
So with regard to our referrals, this commission tend out asking for input from others. We have the Architectural Review Board, uh, letter from down to June twenty seventh. Right, this memorandum, uh, since the ARB recommends approval of the above referenced matter as presented. We have the Planning Commission for the Town of Old Sabre in a letter of July twenty first. Fine federal dispensary. Planning Commission recommends approval of, of this matter as it is consistent with the town plan of conservation and development. The Economic Development Commission of the Town of Old Sabre in the letter of July nineteenth. Those, uh, if the DDC voted to convey to the zoning commission its opinion that there are economic development benefits to the application by fine federal. And that it should be, and then they, they, they wisdomed that they should be considered. But the letter neither recommends or opposes approval. The Town of Old Sabre Land Use Department received a letter from Leonard Walker, the Himalayan Wetlands Enforcement Officer, explaining the extension of the initial permit and that it is still in effect. And there's no changes to the wetlands approval. That's all, as it was and continues. And we have some received, received then from the Department of Police Services, which is serves as our traffic authority for the town.
Mr. Chairman.
A three thing.
Uh, the, the chief of police is here and would like to read his letter.
Right.
The chief would like to read his letter.
Oh, oh, the chief would like, oh, the chief is online to read, read his letter. Yes. Very good. We have from, um, Chief Spira had a letter dated August third online.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Please, please proceed if you will.
Great. Thank you very much, Chairman Freeman and members of the commission. I have completed my review as requested by the zoning enforcement officer. My opinions have not changed since the application of the coastal health and wellness marijuana dispensary at the same location as proposed in 2018. I continue to have grave public safety concerns. While my opinions have not changed, additional experiences have solidified my professional opinions. Citizens have witnessed a degradation of communities across the United States by marijuana dispensaries. Additionally, since 2018, I have heard law enforcement leaders from across the country discuss how marijuana dispensaries have destroyed their communities through increased crime, attracting unwanted attention, increasing driving under the influence incidents and medical emergencies. Fortunately, Old Sabre still has a choice. You have the power to protect Old Sabre. I have elected not to speak with the applicant prior to you hearing my concerns about this application this evening. Despite what is stated or promised, it is obvious that the applicant would need customers to frequent their establishment for the vitality of their proposed business. Small businesses must have constant customer throughput to be successful. Customers will arrive either on foot or by car. The Town of Old Sabre has an obligation to ensure both means of transportation are safe, orderly and conducive to the existing highway structures and plans. The area in which this business proposes to operate is simply not conducive for increased vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the manner it is currently designed. In fact, it is currently one of the town's intersections where frequent accidents occur and certainly near misses. Vehicular traffic entering and exiting part, the part, the existing parking lot on a recurring basis will create added dangers for motorists. The increased traffic in this area exiting and entering the state highway is a matter of great safety concern. Additionally, those who frequent this area of town can attest to the level of vehicular congestion at the intersection of Boston Post Road and Springbrook Road provides on a daily basis. The traffic study submitted by the applicant does not discuss the fact that Springbrook Road also serves as an off-ramp to Interstate ninety-five and a direct route to entrances to Interstate ninety-five. We often see a dramatic increase of traffic at the intersection when there are matters occurring on the highway and motorists, motorists are rerouted through town. These matters almost always require police intervention. The intersection of Springbrook Road and Boston Post Road is also not conducive for pedestrians. The area lacks sidewalks, supportive pedestrian infrastructure such as crosswalks and pedestrian signaling. There is also no proper pedestrian flow to and from the proposed business. The current intersection also lacks a controlled signal for vehicles and pedestrians. Its current configuration is confusing at best and would need dramatic improvements for any business seeking high customer counts in the area. This would include changing the intersection format from a Y intersection to a more traffic calming and safer signalized intersection referred to commonly as a T intersection. To be blunt, permitting the applicant to operate a business at this location without additional considerations and significant improvements to traffic facilities would be negligent. Approval in its current state would most certainly cause traffic issues, including accidents and possible injuries. I would hope that everyone on the commission would agree that the first business seen by visitors as they stop at their first stop sign in Old Sabre after exiting I ninety-five should not be a marijuana dispensary. This type of business does not represent the character, ethics and moral compass of the Town of Old Sabre. The pungent smell of marijuana need not enter the residential neighborhoods of Ridgewood Drive, Patterson Place, Rye Cliff Trail and Springbrook Road. While the area of two thirty-three Boston Post Road is commercial, the backyard area of the location is comprised of a residential neighborhood. The residents at the Glade View Convalescent Hospital do not need to smell the horrific scent, nor do the small children playing outside at the Beach Babies Deer Case Daycare Center. They are all within smelling distance. Think of how far away one can smell a delicious barbecue. Now think of the sickening smell of mass quantities of marijuana reaching the same distance. The applicant has told us this evening that we cannot smell his product and he ensures us that no one is going to be smoking on his property or off his property. But I ask you, who will actually police that? Who will monitor whether people are pulling over their cars and smoking on the side of the road or walking down Route one and smoking the marijuana that they just purchased? I have little doubt that if approved, the fine federal dispensary will require a dramatic increase of public safety services and a corresponding increase of public safety expenditures for Old Sabre's taxpayers. Based on information from other communities around the country, we predict an increase in DUI type offenses, larcenies, disputes, traffic accidents and medical emergencies. The department will also have to maintain a frequent presence in the area of the dispensary to ensure compliance of federal, state and local regulations and laws. Think about it. They promise that no one will be doing things, but who is there to police it but the police? They certainly have no authority outside their grounds to approach people and tell them that they're doing something improperly and ask them to leave. Combined, this will create a situation where there will be a new need for additional police officers in the expansion of our currently right-sized police force. Simply saying they have fifty thousand dollars to deliver to the town for these services does not make any sense in my opinion. If the commission desires to entertain the application, it is imperative that an independent traffic study by our own engineer be conducted and that my traffic-related concerns be addressed in the study before any final decisions are made by your commission. However, and most importantly, because my primary concern every day as your chief of police is the health, safety and welfare of our community, I must respectfully and strongly encourage you to deny this application. It is simply not right and not safe for Old Sabre. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chief Spira, uh, do you have any other referrals, Chris?
So we received, we sent referrals on June twenty seventh. I don't expect any other responses. Um, we did receive a series of letters, um, in opposition JT Dunn, Frank and Erica Casenza, Carl Engelbrecht in favor, Rhonda Worth, Jim Ziplow, Richard Rosenthal and Wayne Aru from Florida. And then we received one email this afternoon from Andrea Isaacs of Down to Earth Group in support.
All right. This is a public hearing and at this point, uh, we're hoping comments to the public in, on Zoom and in the room with regard to this application. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Yes, in the back here in the room. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Heather Lee Young, right here at Pure Prevention Services in Los Angeles. We're about to start soon tonight for peer prevention, maybe. I'm sorry, the interview was too late. I wanted to stay much longer. But like the chief, I have longstanding philosophical issues as well. And certainly, you know, our, I'm a licensed health professional as well and addiction streeter as well as a good service bureau director. And part of our work is, um, peer prevention, education, parent education around substance abuse prevention. So just here tonight to, um, show the kids how the system works and to show that there are certainly adults, um, working in their behalf to promote health and wellness within their community. Even though fine federal means health and wellness, I don't think it actually applies in relation to the campus dispensary. So we just wanted to come tonight to let the children see, um, how the system works and let them hear what the argument was for and against. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. More raising their hands online in the Zoom meeting. All right, in, in the room then? Anyone else wishing to speak on this, that, that application before us? We did note in, in the letter from Frank and Erica Casenza dated July thirty first. In the second paragraph, it mentions additional traffic to an already congested part of town. It has potential customers exiting ninety-five north in order to get back on ninety-five south would have to traverse twice through the busy, well, they don't have to actually go through it twice because they could use the on-ramp on the way to the auto mall. But ninety-five north traffic would have to exit and exit, um, sixty-six and travel through, uh, most of Old Sabre on Route one in order to get there from the Westbrook side of town. So I, I did, I did pick up on that they mentioned. So I did pick up on that data you mentioned specifically beforehand. Otherwise, coming to and from the New London side, it's a, it's a U-turn and continuing southbound. You can continue on Route one to the, to Route one fifty-four and then get on ninety-five at one, one or the other of the ramps that lead to South Town. All right, do we need any further input? We do need an updated statement of abuse from the applicant and any other input that we can identify as this time? Yes, in the back.
Yes, Brittany Eckert, Reservoir Road, and also Preventing Children's Pornator for Old Sabre as well. My one question, yes?
Can you spell your last name, please?
Eckert, E-C-K-E-R-T.
Okay.
A few questions are, will there be an armed person at the facility at all, like so?
I know there's like rules about how I respond, can I respond? Just directly, no, we don't, we don't have an armed person.
And then you mentioned ordering online, is there a procedure for identification online to order?
Yes, to put in an order online, they have to show, put in their name and they also have to scan and take a picture of their identification. And then their identification and their age are confirmed again three times in the store, once outside, once at the check-in register, and then once at a specific register to show that it's it's them a third time. So we confirm, confirm the person who it is as well as their age at three steps behind a step as well on the online ordering platform.
Okay, and this was just for recreational use, not?
We do that for, this facility is just for recreational purchasing. We find that about ninety percent of customers come in with some sort of medical use, it's not like, hey, I just want to do this to to indulge, I guess you could say, generally for health or sleeping or creativity, anxiety, pain, et cetera. But this is, we would not be selling untaxed medical products and the more open products at this facility. Yeah, so. Can I just, do I have an opportunity to respond to public comments in general or is that response to public comment?
What?
Response, I know those were specific questions, can I respond to public comments as well?
Oh, yes.
Sure, so one of the things that we do, looking to this services and addition services. So one of the things that we do as an organization is we've partnered on educational materials with the Root Cent, with the Root Center, formerly the Hartford dispensary. And so we have, both our staff are trained by their content. If successful, as you guys are local, we'd love to converse and work with you guys around any educational materials you have. Both for training our staff for signs of abuse or signs of addiction with customers who come in. And we also, so we take that training internally, right? So all of our staff members are trained to look for those signs and signals. The other thing that we do is we have educational materials at every register as well as on our website to show, to give to people if they're like questioning, if they see signs themselves or if they, you know, want more information, et cetera. The other thing that we do or and plan to do is our three medical dispensaries in Connecticut are managed and run by pharmacists. And so one of the trainings that we do for all of our staff, and we actually do this in Massachusetts as well, where we aren't required to have a pharmacist, our pharmacists do training around any sort of drug interaction because we do get questions about people who are on other medication as well as using cannabis. Rick, our CEO, is a licensed pharmacist, he's on, not currently, was on, was, is is on the pharmacy board of Connecticut as well as on the Yukon Health Center Board. You know, our chairman was the, was the board chair at Hartford Hospital. And so we engage in the medical community as well as the addiction services and addiction recovery community to ensure that we have both the educational materials for customers as well as our staff being able to be trained and look for signs and it's part of the required training within our staff training and on board. And so I do want to note that, you know, the other pieces that, you know, and with the IDs question, right? It's interesting, in our medical facilities, we can actually allow kid, and this goes to your dispensary department versus dispensary facility question. We're actually allowed to have kids in the facility if a parent brings their child and doesn't, and doesn't, like, and leaves them in the waiting room as they make their purchase and then leave. In this facility, no kids are allowed at all, right? So we can't have that, there won't be, there won't be kids in in the facility whatsoever. We're not allowed to, our advertising rules are the strictest in the country. So there won't be advertising, actually, every billboard in the city, in the town of Old Sabre is within five hundred feet or does not fit the ninety percent rule. So we couldn't even advertise on one of the billboards in Old Sabre and actually, I think all of Westbrook as well. There's one in Clinton where you're allowed to, but it's just the specifics. So our, so that's sort of key with our advertising rules. And then no product, no paraphernalia, no motifs, imagery, et cetera, are seen whatsoever within our, within, from outside to inside our facility. Not allowed on the walls, not allowed on the windows, not allowed to even say marijuana anywhere in the regulations of our signage. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for, you know, kids who, look, I I was a seventh-year teacher at a college and so I, I sort of like see that in terms of rules and around schools and such. And so none of that is able to be used as well as, again, product being opened. You know, and then I think one of the misconceptions just around this industry is around, is around crime. And hey, there's a sort of macro question about the idea of cannabis as a gateway drug. There's a lot of the, the, the data has not represented that there's chemical addiction to cannabis, which is in a sense the gateway towards other, others, right? And so, you know, we're incredibly cognizant of this line that we sort of have as an operator. And, you know, a lot of the idea of the gateway drug really comes from the sociological change of I've tried this, now I'm going to try the next thing. In states where cannabis has been legalized and Colorado has been sort of a clearance data, opiate prescriptions are down, right? And so that's one of the things that we, you know, firmly, on my personal opinion, firmly believe in, right, in terms of, right, the opiate epidemic and cannabis, and cannabis especially legalized, actually having a effect that negates the prescription of opiates. So that, that's sort of one side. The other is just around theft, larceny, arrests near the facility. The data is very, very clear across the country that when dispensaries open in local areas, crime goes down. I think, did we submit to the record?
You stole my phone.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to hand these out, this is because of the question, the first thing, the bottom section is articles that have the links to the names of the studies that Ben's referencing. And then the other was just because there had been a question about the proximity to daycare, that first sheet is just the information directly from the state website indicating that there is no specific separation distance between a dispensary and any of the facilities. It's up to each individual.
Within its, within its own laws. And so, you know, I, we heard, we listened to, I read the chief's, chief's letter. And, you know, if we are deemed to be approved, our goal and plan is to work in conjunction, right? And if there's any requirements that the department were to have, right, we're gonna, we want to avoid. Right, because the worst thing that happens for us, right, the worst thing that happens for us is an injury. And so we do a ton of work in our diligent preparation. We do a ton of work in our operational plan. We do a ton of work just around our security and ensuring that our backups to understand exactly what's going on are, are clear and that we run a facility that the town doesn't have to think about and that we're proud and that customers like to free, that customers like to forgive. It is accurate that transactions for any business keep you in business, but and so I'm not denying it anything noted there. But at the same time, from an operational perspective, from a customer service perspective, you know, our goal is to be safe, smiling, secure, and educational and a resource. You know, we are, we are breaking new ground here, right? And there's lots of differing opinions around that. There's always worries around when these operators come into play. And, you know, luckily for us and luckily for us around the country, it's been generally worry and then positive. For us, that's been, you know, the case specifically. We've received letters of support in other applications and times from every municipality that we're in, whether it's the mayor or law enforcement, it's our goal, right? My, I know I'm not going to change everyone's opinion, but our goal is to prove that to be the case for, if we do have the opportunity to expand our business, that, you know, we were deemed as somebody who, you know, when people were worried, did a good job and quelled those fears and operated well. And, you know, so yeah, we're an open book, right? We're trying to be incredibly transparent and our facility setup. You know, we submit our entire security plan because we are proud of it and it has worked incredibly well. Yeah, and so that's, that's really, you know, how I wanted to make sure I was responding. And I threw it on, you know, the Root Center, for example, has been incredible. You know, they've been credible for our team, right? Whether we've been doing speeches there or if their team has come and spoken to us. So, you know, and it's other resources like that within the town, within five-on-one, two-threes, the non-for-profits, within just, you know, the local business community that we, we hope to bring posit, we hope to bring, we hope to and plan to bring positives.
Joanna, we have, yes, the clerk notified me that we have one person online who wishes to make a comment on this application.
Hi, my name's, hi, my name's Erica Cosenza. I'd like to ask a question about he, it's been indicated that to, that you have to put an order in online and then get it a time, an appointment time to come pick it up. If someone is driving by the dispensary, could they stop in and look at a menu at that time and put it in, not the night before or the day before? So I'm going to say like an à la carte, like, could they just kind of go by and decide to order something? And would it be ready?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Pull into the parking lot, take out the phone and make, and make, and make an order in the parking lot?
So generally, check your ID there. If there were a allotted time that they could put it in for the order right there, we would allow them to fill a slot that was open. We would not allow them to just come in, walk in, make an order if there was time. So only could they put in order that would be ready for it. But at the same time, orders close fifteen minutes before sort of the allotted window. And so if they were not sort of in a window, if they were in a window right there, they'd have to push it out for at least fifteen minutes if there wasn't available time, they conceivably could put in an order. And then we would prep it and handle it and be ready. But no, they can't like come in, browse, you know, hang out, ask questions. We do try and be very specific with the online ordering, especially at the beginning. We have to be incredibly strict around it.
But they, but they, but they could look and put an order in and you can say hang around or go somewhere and come back for your appointment in an hour. So there is the possibility that it's not, everything is not being done ahead of time where they get an appointed time. People can stop and purchase or make an order and wait to act.
Yeah, so they wouldn't be able to like come in, come in, look around, place an order and have it be ready. They'd have to do it based on the online, based on the menu or to be able to call in. And then they could do it before, not every order is necessarily prepped the day before, but it is prepped in advance for their time of parking the car, coming in and going out. So if it was, I don't know, let's say it's ten o'clock and then we had orders available, we had a window at ten thirty or ten forty-five, they yes, could leave. They could place their order, we'd say, no, it's not going to be ready until you're allotted time. They could then place, they could then leave and come back conceivably. But we do consider that, that a pre-order. We would consider and allow that as a pre-order. Or we almost sort of let them order, us prep it in the meantime and then, and then go back. That's not how, how we set up. You know, over time, right, demand sort of, demand changes and from there. But, but when it's busy and when people are using yours, now we're very, very strict with, it has to be prepared beforehand. Yes, that might be thirty minutes beforehand. Generally, we've seen in the beginnings of our availability smarters, about eighty percent of our, of our slots are, are going to be filled up the day before, right at opening, you know, and generally, most are open. We're not like filling every single window all, all the time. So it sort of depends on busyness, but they can't just put in their order, hang out there and then grab it an hour later. That, that defeats the purpose. Does that answer your question?
Right, it, it answered, it does answer my question, but they still can hang around. I mean, they, they, they have to have time to pick up, it's okay. No, not in the building, but in your parking spots or driving around that area.
People use a parking spot if they're just sitting there waiting an hour or however, you know, maybe someone gets there super early. If we had a slot for them within that allotted time, right, let's say they get there at ten and their pickup order window is eleven. If there were a pickup window earlier, we would let them pick up early because it does the effect at the same amount of time and we're still throttling and handling the amount of orders and traffic. So I'm sort of picturing this in my head. But if they were there early, we don't let them just sit there. You can't just sit and loiter in our parking lot waiting for your order. That, that also would defeat the purpose of why we have a pre-ordering system with a specific allotted time.
Okay.
Do you see the next available spot open?
So when you check out, there's like windows of, hey, pick here, pick here, pick here, sort of like a calendly type appointment system. So you pick and then you click and then you see the available slots essentially. It sort of opens up.
Pick the next available one because I'm going to wait.
Yeah, you could, if you were there, you would let me pick the next available one. We don't let the car sit there and wait. But, yeah, you, you see like a, an open options. Maybe it's not for that day. Maybe it'll be for the next day, maybe it's for later, maybe it's for, you know, fifteen to twenty minutes from now.
So you do have to police the lot per se.
Pardon?
You do have to police the parking lot.
Definitely, we absolutely, we absolutely do police the parking lot for that.
Correct.
Yeah, because we also have to police the parking lot to ensure that after people's orders are done, they leave.
Creo scan?
Chief Spear. Chief Spear would like to speak. Chief Spear?
Yes, thank you very much. So listen, I appreciate the polished presentation. However, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm still confused on what the applicant's ideal customer throughput per hour of operation would be. Clearly, they're a business and they want to be profitable. And it sounds like it's more than twelve people an hour. So I hear a lot about reservation systems, how it works and the night before. But it could be the day of, they're policing the lot, but I think if someone doesn't leave, they're probably going to have to actually call the real police to ask people to leave. So my question to the commission is, is do we have the data, the anticipated data on what customer throughput will be every single hour? What's their, what's their goal?
Well, that's supposed to be reflected in the traffic analysis report from the traffic engineer.
So, so what we, and I know that we submitted a copy of this to you. What we say is that the operator of the proposed site is anticipating fifty-five transactions per hour initially and that that's reflective of what we anticipate as the opening period and that it will likely be in the range of thirty-five to forty transactions per hour on a sort of longer-term basis.
And how, you're open ten hours a day?
From, from vehicle trips. So will we find vehicle trips in the traffic analysis report or transactions?
So we have both, so we have in the, in the data.
I believe the chief is asking about vehicle trips and.
Over the course of the day. I heard the word transactions, not trips.
I'm interested in transactions. Because people can come in one car, right? I suppose a couple of people could show up for the same time slot. You got twelve registers, right? So four people in the same car could technically go in and receive their product at the same time at four different registers. But how many hours are we proposing that this is open a day? Is it nine hours or ten hours?
Nine AM to eight PM, six hours.
So we propose, we propose eleven as there weren't specific guidances, when there wasn't specific guidance on available hours of operation within the, within the rules. If the, if the rule said we were open fewer hours, we'd be open fewer hours than that. Some towns have different Sunday hours, right? It's, it's sort of based on the municipality, we'd be happy to work with whomever there. In terms of.
If we took, if we took the number forty, that's four hundred and forty transactions a day. And so I'd like the members of the commission to imagine that intersection, imagine where this building is, and imagine a potential of four hundred and forty individual cars entering and then exiting that park. and then exiting that parking lot.
Sorry, I just want to make sure. How many cars a day are there in our, in our data?
I don't know that I have the, um, the actual numbers with me, but on an all-day basis passing this site, there's several thousand vehicles. So that 400 vehicles would be mixing with several thousand.
So, so.
Right. But those 400 vehicles, sir, those 400 vehicles are making turns into a parking lot and out of a parking lot. It's completely difference of, completely different to have vehicular throughput on a state roadway on Route 1. But when those vehicles are braking, signaling, turning against traffic, turning with traffic, that's a complete disruption. So adding 440 events times two, right? Cause the customer account, we're hoping at their lower number of 40 per hour, 440 events, right? We double that, we're at 880. That's a lot to add to that interception. And, and I think that the polished answers are great for the business. But here in the town of Old Saybrook, we have to actually think about how it's going to affect vehicular and pedestrian safety. I don't think that there is a member on the zoning commission that doubts my knowledge of appointment setting and the delivery of goods. Certainly after our experience over the last two years. I have some experience with vehicular throughput in the town of Old Saybrook. And this is going to generate a very large service population. You mentioned the closest billboard is Clinton. So clearly your catchment area, and I don't know if that's been identified, Mr. Chairman. What is the catchment area that they're hoping to have for this business?
So we don't have a specific answer that we were just, when, when the, uh, when the article came out that we were applying here, the billboard companies reached out to me. That's how I know, that's how I know the data, just to know, um, you know, just, just comparing, right? There's an approved location in East Lime. There's an approved location in Branford. More sort of coming over time in the state of Connecticut. Um, I don't have a specific answer to the, to the Kethrin area. I, I don't actually know the data of how far specifically people come from. I know the amount of specific transactions that we're able to, you know, that we're able to do and handle. And that's how we assess and set up our operational plan to ensure that those are, are quick and expeditious. And then that they're not sort of one after the other in terms of cars going in and out. And so we stagger within the time. Um, you know, and that's, that's sort of how we, we've handled it. We haven't had, you know, we'll just note we haven't had any traffic issues in any of our facilities outside. Um, I know that every town and every location is different. Um, you know, I can just sort of note how we feel comfortable around the operations of, of handling traffic, of handling customer flow and of the data that we've seen operationally and consistently across our facilities as well as the consistent data, not the, not necessarily the, um, subjective anecdotal data, but the objective data of prime traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Right? That's, that's the information that I have from, from our three years, three years of experience operating these facilities, which are absolutely new, um, definitely in Connecticut and then across the country.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned. 440 trips, that's a lot.
The commission has been made aware of traffic as a major concern from the town's traffic authority in Chief Spear and from letters received from the public and from discussions tonight. And we have a traffic analysis report from a licensed engineer, which is part of the material submitted during the public hearing for consideration. And at this point, um, we have, we have, we need a modified statement of use from the applicant. We need to have employee parking designated on the plan. We need, what else? Oh, with, with regard to windows and what, I know the law is specific about what can and cannot be seen through windows, but we have regulations regarding windows being windows.
Yeah.
And not being covered up from the inside. So a window is a see-through window. So I didn't see anything in the plans to reflect that you would do that, but we have windows in town which are non-conforming, which should not be used as examples for what could be done with the glass, such as that West Marine or CVS, bad examples. Don't, don't look at them.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just suggest that the traffic, a report that you have is not comprehensive, does not meet, meet the standards that we would normally see for a business of this magnitude.
I'll ask for the commission to take into account when it's time for us to examine it in detail and for deliberations on this matter.
Thank you.
All right.
Bike rec.
Bike rec.
Oh, bike rec. Yes, and please, that, that.
And then the one other thing I had was to correct the site plan, which was just supposed to be, it was, I think it was supposed to be representative type. So we'll make sure that that has the, matches the hours operation in the, um, statement of use. So everything else, um, that I had, and then the one thing that obviously we weren't able to address in Chief Spear's letter, having just gotten it this right before the meeting, um, there was a question about, um, that Mr. Sullivan also alluded to about the intersection and whether there's any opportunity there. I think he was talking about even a redesign. That's something we'll certainly take a look at, but, but couldn't do, um, on short notice. So we will do that. Um, in addition to updating the, um, the materials.
All right. Anything else, Chris? Anyone else? All right. But that'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Wait a minute. So Bob, I don't know how long this is, I don't know how long this is going to take, but you have three public hearings and two preliminary discussions for your next meeting. I don't know if that's, I don't know how long it'll take. The following meeting would be September 7.
Which date?
September 7.
September 7.
So I, I don't know how long it's going to take you to do that. And if we did that, then you would need an extension of time.
Yes.
And September 7th, fine. And would you be able to grant us an extension of the public hearing? Right, okay. It'd be a day or two shorter.
We'll make a motion to continue this public hearing for Fine Cell Dispensary for special exception use application at 233 Boston Post Road to our regularly scheduled meeting of September.
Wednesday, September 7.
7. 2022. At 7:00 PM. And then first floor conference room, S302 Main Street, down hall, the whole table.
Second.
Second invite, very little. Any discussion over here continuing till September 6. 7. Aye, sorry, 500, motion passed. We'll see you then.
Great, thank you.
Next on the agenda, committee representatives, staff reports.
So you, you want us to do?
I think, I think an independent traffic study is.
So you want our traffic engineer to review?
That an independent study should be done.
Per, per the chief's recommendation.
By the applicant.
By the applicant.
Is the chief still?
Yeah, by the applicant.
No. Do you, but I guess the question is a lot of times we get a traffic study and then our traffic engineer.
No.
Just by.
This would be a fully independent traffic. So now, this report, right.
Did you hear what they're talking about? We already made a motion, um, just procedurally, figure out how best to, to deal with this. Yes, I guess I understand what the commission's request is. You could get their sense and you and I can talk further about what we need to do. I'm just concerned about having a conversation outside of the public. No, no, I'm just saying, did you hear what they were saying? Cause I'll, I'll get to you tomorrow. Right. Thank you.
Do, do, I mean, can we, we can't continue to speak about it until the 7?
Will you close the hearing? She was saying, that's why she.
So it will come up for discussion on the 7.
Well, the thing is it, it's two meetings out. So my thought was that if we could relate to the applicant or I can relate to the applicant, we can't talk about any more of this public hearing. Right. Procedure. That's why. Okay, so.
Representative and staff report.
So we do get a request, um, on behalf of the Old Saybrook Senior Housing. For a staff report, but Elizabeth's definitely put in the request this year. So since she waited all night, I don't know if she wants to discuss the request or have me discuss. Elizabeth?
Yeah, I'm here. I had to unmute. As part of our ARPA application for the Saybrook Village and for your clerk's benefit, it's spelled capital S-A-Y-E, capital B-R-O-O-K-E. Village on Sheffield Street. We have applied for a pavilion to be put in the northeast corner of our property. That would measure approximately 28 by 16. And I came in and I got a site plan and we went out and measured. And we wish to put this 80 feet from the upland review area. So we're far from the marsh. And it would be an open air pavilion for our residents who have been isolated now for the almost past two and a half years because of, uh, the COVID. We can't use our community room for a meeting room. Um, it would put our residents too close together. And so, um, the first selectman asked me to go to plant, to zone to land use and have zoning okay it or see if there were any problems. And so I went to land use and got the site plan and we went out and measured. And Chris has the site plan and I drew on it to scale where the pavilion would be. And it looks like we're okay.
So the question is, is this a modification? Of the plan approval? Would want to see the minor or major modification.
Access.
This shows a pavilion located at a distance from the wetlands of this property. Are there any wetlands on the, uh, adjacent property of Marion, now more formally Marion E. Jones? Because the, uh, contour lines curve around to be paralleled almost to the property line. And if there are wetlands that, the, the elevation line that continues here is four. Are there wetlands on the?
This is close to the, um, cemetery. This is adjacent to the cemetery side.
Right.
It's couple of hundred feet from anything on the west side. Because we've got the whole building, all the buildings between where the pavilion would be and any other property on the west. There are the east 30 some odd units and the west 20 odd units.
Right, the, the, the plans before us show the pavilion at a 60 feet from the wetlands that are on this property. My question is, is that pavilion, what is the distance from, of, of, from that pavilion to the wetlands on any of the adjacent properties which are less than 60 feet?
Couple of hundred, I would think. I mean, the cemetery is on.
That's, I'm not asking about the cemetery. I'm asking about wetlands. And is the pavilion, it's the, at what, what is the distance from the pavilion to the wetlands on other properties?
Although I'm trying to pull the map.
It's not shown on the plans.
I wasn't asked that when I was at land use, so. The nearest property would be the cemetery. I don't know the, the other is across the street, which would be the middle school. And on the west side, it's few hundred feet.
Chris, Chris is map geo-ing.
Yes. You have my, you have the only copy of the site plan. I don't.
We real, we realize the wetlands locations on map geo were not particularly precise, but. So my question comes from the, the wetlands indicated on this plan in front of us are at elevation three and three and a half and 3.7 and 4.1. And then on what I have is the right side of the paper in front of me. The, the elevation contours curve around. And there's one contour at four feet on the property near the bottom of the page that I have in front of me. So that tells me that there is a possibility that there could be wetlands on the Marion E. Jones Conservator or James F. Jones. Line 165, page 788. That there could be wetlands on that property at elevation four or less that would be closer to this pavilion than any wetlands that are on the same property as the pavilion.
I'm just going to share this screen. Yeah, so easier to get.
It's over the grass. You can't ask people who are 90 years old to walk over the grass. They're, they're going back. It's not going to get used.
Liz, can you see that?
Yep. Now, what property are they talking about?
So here's the contour line.
Right.
Here is.
The contours away. Okay, so that, that would in, the, the map geo of the cemetery property then would indicate that the wetlands do not curve around to be parallel to the property line. They remain with the rest of the water. Okay. All right. My question has been answered graphically. Yes. Okay. The remaining details of this, is this, is it greater than 400 square feet?
So the question was, would this have to go to the commission for a modification of the senior housing? Approved? Probably. Probably.
Yes. Yes, it does. Yes.
So it's 448 square feet.
Right. If it was less than 400 square feet, would we be in the same position?
I'm not sure where you're coming with the 400.
No, there's a, there's an accessory building number triggered, isn't there?
Right, but the, the question is because this was a commission review for the approval. It's not whether it's an accessory building or not. Is this something the commission would want to see as a modification to the approved? to the approved site plan for this? Or is it something that falls under a minor, under the addition of 1,000 square feet, where it can be handled administratively without having to go for the minor?
I say minor modification.
Minor modification.
I will as well.
So would be certificate zoning compliance?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just being clear.
Yeah.
So that's your answer?
Yep.
Will that be, and I'm putting a sidewalk access to it?
I can ask.
Because otherwise, it's not going to get used.
Will there be a sidewalk added to this?
Uh, we're not sure yet. We, what we might just have to do is clear the grass, put down gravel. Some of our residents do use walkers. Some of our residents on electronics, electric scooters. You know, these are elderly, and I'm saying this tongue-in-cheek because I'm older than some of them, elderly folk. But whatever we do, we want to do it so that it's ADA compliant. There will be no electricity there. There will be no running water.
So I think the question the commission has is how will this be accessible? Are people on a scooter or a wheelchair if it's gravelly?
Well, the scooters go over the grass because they're, these people ride those scooters over just about everything.
No, that's not a good idea.
We keep the grass pretty short over there, and they go over the grass.
You're like, you know, rocks and, you know, holes, and that's just not safe. No.
We keep them safe. We haven't had, we haven't had a resident fall off a scooter yet, and I've got backing on wood in my kitchen.
This is not a good idea. Maybe we need to see this.
I'm telling you that we probably should. I think we should see this. Really? I think we should see this.
We should see.
Yeah. So it's just a minor, or minor modification, because it's under the 1,000.
We can see it even if it's a minor modification.
Yes, yeah. Is there any other questions to move on to the next?
No.
No.
Hey, Chris, I'll come in tomorrow morning.
Okay. We just need, I guess what the commission is looking for is, is some way, I know you're going to apply for the ARPA money, but even if you could sketch something down for your ARPA request to show how you're going to get people in in a safe manner.
Okay.
Like, you know, a sidewalk or something. So I don't think it's going to stop you from putting in your request. It would just be finalizing it with sidewalk or some other flat surface.
Not a problem. I think it's in our proposal that we gave to them that there would be something. I don't have anything in front of me.
I think once it's finalized and shows some type of a sidewalk or other surface, then it would just go to the commission at that point.
Excellent.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. So we're going to be busy. So your next few meetings, that's why I didn't think you wanted to, I don't, previous application to continue it. Your next meeting, you have the three handford applications are scheduled for that hearing date, for public hearing. And Benny's or Carpi and Otto's also asked to come in for a discussion. That would be on the 15th. And then going to the 7th, fine federal continued, Architecture Review Board has a petition for you for assigned regulation change. MAX's place has a petition to amend the regulations on the 7th. Smoke on the water is being submitted in the next week or so. So it'll be a busy fall, it looks like. Otherwise, we're busy in the office. I don't have too much to report. I've been working with economic development. We're trying to get some sidewalk plans. And it's just been pretty busy overall.
Can I ask a question regarding the application that will be coming in for smoke in the water? Will it be viewed for completeness before a date is set, or is that not up to?
Well, I don't have anything to review. I mean.
No, but I'm saying.
We can review it for completeness. What I'd like to do is push it further off so we can get all the reviews and, and not rush to schedule the, the public hearing. So even with this handford application, we push it off some time. There were some comments. There was an issue with the photometric plan. The application, you know, had some, you know, I don't want to get into it. But so I'm trying to push them off and try to get them into better shape and have the applicant have time to address the comments, whether it's drainage or engineering and so forth, before it gets to you.
Okay. I guess I would like to see a complete application come before.
I was just going to say that. It could be complete, but doesn't mean it's only.
But the application be complete. So we have some, so we have something to review, look at, make a decision.
Are we done?
You need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
One second, Jerry's motion to adjourn, no in favor.
All right.